States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've never really had any gal building. Alright, so uh, I should call it the order first, but call the order, the time now is 6:01, it'll be January 15th, 2020, uh, will be city council meeting. We'll call, Debojovich, Hekumovich, Meyer Nail, Stein, I'm here, and uh, Mr. Johnson is absent. I need an agenda, or I need a motion to approve the agenda with any corrections or additions.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion, got a second for discussion?
I have a couple additions.
So we got a motion by Hekumovich and a second by Meyer Nail, what corrections do we have?
Uh, fire relief increase, and um, what, yeah, just see that, whatever, me, it's fine, whatever. And um, annual contribution to troubling fire.
Okay.
See contribution.
I have an addition under guess, uh, Meds One. Anything else that wanna add or correct the leak? Alright, got a motion, a second, all in favor? Anybody opposed, motion carries? So we'll start off with Meds One. That's you. Bill? Chief Holm?
I've never presented one of these before.
Really?
I didn't know I was gonna have to prepare a speech.
Well, I know the person who was gonna do it's gone, but.
He is.
I had reached out and made a recommendation for Chief Holm, who saved a life in the line of duty, and I, Meds One here is, present his award, and you don't have nothing to say upon any of them? I wasn't there.
You know, me, I'm not much of a talker, actually, no, um, I don't, I wasn't there. Um, but anytime we have somebody, uh, who's not, um, you know, employed by us, who does something to save somebody's life, that's noteworthy, so, like, I recognize those people, and um.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna get a picture.
Oh, perfect.
Let's do this again, then, though.
Yeah, perfect.
Could we have a story of what happened?
I'd rather Bill tell the story.
Basically, it was a CPR type of call. It was more than that, though. So Bill goes on, Bill goes on scene, the person that they thought was deceased, when Bill got there, he uh, checked the patient, realized the patient was not deceased, and performed CPR, and saved the person's life, and they transported him down to a different facility. So let's get a picture in there.
Super.
Absolutely.
Turn the picture in soon. Alright, thank you, thank you. Congratulations, Bill. Far too often, the officers don't get recognition for their, for their work, so. Thank you, Meds One.
You're welcome.
Alright, Gloria Kang is Boy of the Girls Club.
I have to stand? So you all should have received a request from the Boys and Girls Clubs. Uh, just to give you a little bit of a background, um, we are in three sites now, we started with two and three. In Greenway, we have over ten percent of the total school population going to Boys and Girls Clubs after school. And uh, this summer, uh, we do have in-kind space in uh, Greenwood High School, so we get about four thousand square feet from them, uh, to use for our programming after school during the summer. And this summer, uh, all Greenwood buildings are undergoing some major construction. So we have found ourselves without space for the summer months, for uh, for our youth. And uh, so my request is to see if we could use parts of City Hall for our summer programming. And uh, John, I see you sitting there, so legally, uh, for the legalities of it is that we do carry our own insurance, and so all of that, uh, we would get the right to cover us in this building as well, so. If that was a question. Uh, so our programming this summer was scheduled for June 8th through August 20th, and we would take a week right before July off, so that's eleven weeks during the summer. Last summer, we were open 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and we're willing to adjust that a little bit if needed, but we do run our programming Monday through Friday. And along with that, we work with the school district to have Summer Learning Academy, and we have actually taken over the Greenwood Summer Learning Academy. Uh, so the areas that we are requesting to use would be the third floor. Uh, this would be the ballroom, the, the, yeah, upstairs. Uh, on occasion, the library for very small, uh, groups getting together. Uh, we do have reading buddies and some literacy programs. Uh, to use this room on occasion as well, specifically for uh, the three days a week that we do learning academies, so we can separate the ages even more. And then, of course, the kitchen gathering space, because we do offer uh, breakfast, lunch, and snack every single day. So a little bit of the statistics are that we only charge ten dollars a year, so we do rely on the community to help support um, our youth. And uh, during, during the summer months, we have over one thousand hours of impact hours, one thousand impact hours, I should say, so we have so many youth coming in that we can uh, we can say that there are over a thousand hours of impact. And this, in the summer alone, we see about three hundred kids, not a day, not all at one time, depending on their schedules. Uh, average daily attendance during the summer is about sixty. Uh, we have seen as high as one hundred during the summer, not all at the same time, some kids come in the morning and leave, some kids um, uh, come in the afternoon. But what it amounts to is three hundred area youth, most of them are Greenwood students, uh, which is about a hundred and thirty families. And the displacement this summer really puts a, a burden on some of our families who have become to rely on us for that summer programming, and uh, an opportunity for some parents to actually hold down a full-time job, because they know that they have an affordable safe place for their kids to go. Uh, and the, the final thing that I wanted to say is that in, in the process of our programming during the day, we have um, we have a security system where we know which kids are here, and which kids aren't, are checked into our clubs as well, so uh, we have measurements to make sure that kids are going home safely as well. So my request is to uh, ask the city council to, I'll have to do that in a minute. I'm asking the city council to use the facility for the summer.
So assume that you're flexible, in case there's other things that need to be, you, you know, facilities to be utilized for other things.
Absolutely, and this is the same in Greenwood as well, sometimes we get shifted to a different area. We have other buildings that we can use, we can, we'll have to split the kids up, but for cases like that, we would.
I was gonna ask you, Tara, how many events during the day in the summer realistically, I mean, during the day?
Events?
Yeah, or things where?
Well, there's just Tuesdays, this cribbage, but they have been kinda sticking to the senior room, unless the seniors have them, then we move them to the basement. But other than that, we just, I mean, the library itself only has a couple things during the season. You ever, you have any issues with maintenance, or cleanups, or that kinda stuff?
Oh, I talked to Lori about that, and she said that uh, they're willing to have the kids do cleanup.
Well, and staff, and that's another thing, yeah. But we have seven staff that will be here besides the, uh, that would be here besides the rent director, and their pay, and their trade, and so, it's a fifteen to one ratio that we have with our kids.
Um, Lori, you said that you have kids maybe come for half the day and then check out. Um, how would that, can you assure us that, uh, that won't become really confusing? Because we have some children who come to the library and enjoy that during the day, and then, so how will kids kind of be a part of your program, but then also be coming and going to the library for the day?
Well, we know all of our kids, so that's a part of it, and we're in a public building now, the school building, so we do have kids coming and going for different events, and the same way Grand Rapids, if you're familiar with the Commons area, there are other events going on, but we know who our kids are, and they're usually identified by a level Boys and Girls Club landier with their name taken on it. But we would encourage all of the kids to at least check us out, and um, to partake in some of the activities.
So when you're at the school, are you doing like gym activities too, or?
We, we do, we do gym activities when it's available, so like, we get outside quite a bit.
So you'll be in and out too, when you're here, to the park or?
Absolutely.
So if your program ends at five thirty, how soon after are you guys out? It's just 'cause we have ballroom dance that starts at six?
Well, and that's the thing, Tara, is that one, toward the end of the day, of course, the numbers dwindle. When, when kids become Boys and Girls Club members, it's not that they have to be here for a certain amount of time, it's a casual check-in, check-out based on parents' needs. So we would be able to shift into a different area, and we could have a handful, like ten kids, and.
So, so like, as parents get off work or whatever, kids get picked up towards the end of the day, so?
Absolutely.
Do we have any issues when City Hall closes?
Well, it closes at five, so they would just have to have a, a key to get in and out, because we're not here by eight either.
Right.
And then, of course, in the evening with security, we would make sure there's a checkout to check all areas of the building to make sure there are any children left at here.
Tara, do you, can you think of anything, any concerns? Because you, I mean, you and Kevin are the ones who know this building better than anyone probably, so.
I mean, if they're sticking to the, mainly the auditorium and the basement, nothing I can think of. Okay, what about you, Kevin?
Just uh, ensuring that cleaning gets done, uh, there is, I, there is the issue of if there's gonna be meals every day, we've got, it's gonna be a lot of garbage, uh, electricity, gas, you know, stuff like that. But as far as maintenance-wise, as long as the cleaning gets done, and then with the ballroom dancing, you know, you guys would probably have to clean that up before they come.
Right.
But, you know, idea.
Because they put down some kind of powder on the floor.
Yeah, and they, well, we discussed that the other day too, and kids would love to take their shoes off and just go in their socks, and so, and we're, I'm coming up with another, next month, we're gonna recoat the floor again. The oil base has held up good, so I don't think there'll be an issue with that.
And I guess my only thing I keep coming back to is the library, and making sure that um, that people, patients can still be using the library without, you know, kids being all over it. You know, and I don't know what that looks like during the summer time, so I'm not sure that.
And one of the things last summer was that there were youth who came into the library, and um, I don't think she's here anymore, but there was someone who worked in the library who was putting together food and meals for kids who were here most of the day. And how convenient, we have a free summer food program that these kids could utilize, and uh.
City staff too?
Someone's gotta test the food for the kids.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to the federal government.
For a donation?
For a donation, absolutely, and gosh, I mean, well, that would be great to have people come in and have lunch with the kids, and I'd pay for that. You can put that on my group.
Okay. Do you have a motion? We have a motion, and a second for discussion?
I'd make a motion, I think the kids should have a place to go this summer, and I think if we have the space, we should let you do it, so I'll make a motion to approve that, um, from June 8th through August 28th, from eight to five thirty with some exceptions, the Boys and Girls Club can use City Hall.
Is there a second?
I don't second.
Got a motion by Hekumovich, and a second by Meyer Nail, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and three hundred people thank you as well.
Well, it'd be nice to see the kids in the area, have a place to go with.
Yeah, and um, I'd, I'd love to see people come in and see more of what we do in the, um, our three core values that we have, with the academics and healthy lifestyles and this collective, so yeah.
I didn't ask this question, but do they like to pick weeds or walk flowers?
There are youth that are always asking for things to do, especially those middle schoolers, and we've done, within walking distance of, of the high school, we've done yard work for, I think, a quarter.
You know, and that's, that could be a one when they're to some civic classes or something, I don't know what you're gonna do, but.
Exactly.
There could be some people in the community that could use a little, little help.
Character development and leadership, that's one of our pillars, so um, yeah.
I used to teach leadership.
Partner, and you know, some new jobs.
And then, the other thing is with the playground, because we're trying to get the Boys and Girls Club uh, leadership group to be working while the playground starts going, what a great way to incorporate them, from this point, they can actually visualize and go play at that park and see how limited it is.
Right.
Get a firsthand experience with that, so, thank you, thank you so much.
Alright. I just wanna go, I just wanna go back, uh, to the award that Chief Holm got. I wanna thank Meds One for doing what they did, they, uh, I had a meeting with Meds One some time ago, and we decided that uh, it'd be a good thing that, uh, third party be looking at the standards. Meds One is the ones that have paid for all of this, and they should be commended, and I appreciate what they're doing. So. Alright, so. Set meeting dates and times for 2020. Tara? Just keeping the same or what?
Were you gonna talk?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know if there was something done or not.
How you gonna be on there?
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're at it, come on up. I didn't see you on there. They're not all new. We just made you feel insignificant, and I'm sorry.
No, I really don't feel insignificant, I feel like I eventually have times where it's a little bit, so. No, so uh, you guys all should have the priority sheet.
Yeah.
I just wanted to update you, since I updated the priority based on the information that you guys provided. And so, um, this is now the new one through ten priority based on your individual. If you look at the column three, there's this priority one through ten.
Mm-hmm.
That is your averages, if you will, um, so that's what gave us the ranking, the new ranking. Um, so what I'd like to do, Bob, is to probably have a meeting of you, just like a one-on-one meeting, to kinda figure out how all of this is gonna play into effect. I mean, I'm really active with the Playground Committee currently, so I don't see that as something that's gonna be going away, which I assume that project in and of itself, but if there's projects that we'd like to try and work on, you and I kinda brainstorming and seeing when it falls into the larger city program. Um, and then, you know, we can discuss it, and I think I can talk about it in the city council meeting.
As far as number one goes, I have that, I forgot to bring the copy of retarded print tonight, so, but.
Right, yeah, it's, because I was already gonna check off the list beginning of the year, right, so. Um, and then, you know, we can work from that, so I think that's good. And there are really good opportunities, I think, for Colorete and for Bobby to be able to work together on a couple of the projects that I've written here, so there are opportunities to work across once they've interacted with each other, and have some truly potential improved opportunities for both communities. So, do you guys have any questions before I, I'll take up any more of your time?
Where's your plan?
Your plan?
So, you know how to get ahold of me at work during, during the day? It's easy to call me at my employer.
I don't have that number, I just have, I just text it.
Nine one one?
Oh, I need to call now. I haven't talked, you don't call her?
But I'm just saying. No, just, yeah, call me at work, at the police department.
Yeah.
At any time during the day, because I couldn't find work during the day and stuff, but.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me know when you wanna get together and.
That's cool.
He'll invite you to his office.
I was gonna say, am I in trouble?
Skin tough, not in tough, and. So.
Alright, um.
But I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll leave it to the rest of the meeting, if you guys have any questions afterwards, we can talk to them.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, now back to set meeting dates and time.
Well, if you're asking why, then you know why.
One meeting a month, right?
Yes.
I'm not for that.
I'd keep it the same.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to keep the meetings the same for next, the 2020 year.
Is there a second? You got a motion by Hekumovich, and a second by Meyer Nail, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. So, reorganization appointments, the first one's committee, or, community committees, Library Board.
So this is who's currently on the committee, who's up, so, and Dorothy is willing to stay on.
Do you have to make a motion if we don't?
I would say let's do the appointments, and then they.
Do them all, I'm sure, alright.
Yeah, up the end.
Alright, anybody have anything they wanna add to Library Board, any concerns or anything? Alright, Planning and Zoning, Mike Foss.
He's willing to stay on.
Anybody have any more of your questions?
He is, okay.
Okay.
And Dorothy is just, okay.
Council committees, wage and benefit.
I have a question, so you can make an appointment for any of these if you'd like?
Yes.
If you want someone different, you can discuss it, yeah? We're gonna do one.
Motion.
Motion for all of them.
I'd, I'd, but I, I just want Jeff as Planning and Zoning, if he would want.
Jeff who?
Nail.
He's already on.
But as head of planning.
Well, that's for Planning and Zoning, appoint everyone here then.
Oh, okay.
You're just filling the vacancy, the open spot.
I got it.
So, and they're, when they meet for, you guys, did you meet this month already? You did, you should have set, picked them.
No, we did not, we did, pending this meeting, so next meeting.
Yeah, so now you should choose new.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Alright, moving on then?
Yep.
Okay, so Council committees, wage and benefit, council as a whole, is there an issue with that? Personnel, Adam Hekumovich and Nancy Lynn Meyer.
I'd say we could keep, I, I'd be okay keeping it the same as you got in your first year down, maybe no open mark.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
Probably.
Representatives, uh, Greenwood Joint Record, Robert Lawson.
Sorry, I will continue.
Okay, anybody have a problem? I should, I should probably phrase that differently.
That would be okay. You would hurt them, or?
Yeah, I do not, uh, I do not mean us the way that sounds. Western Masapi Mining Planning Board, Mike Foss and Robert Stein.
And Mike is willing to stay on now?
Well, Bob doesn't make those meetings, Bob has a difficult time, does anybody else wanna be on that other than Bob Stein?
Actually, I'm somewhat interested in it, but I don't know when the machines are.
The Thursday.
Thursday, I'm gonna want that.
Six o'clock, right?
I know that we have, uh, Mike Foss. I'm sorry, what? She has all of her handies, I think that she, well.
I, I used to go all of them.
You want to dance with him? So is Bob?
I'll cut the, Bob, great, okay.
Well, he doesn't throw anyways.
Well, he'd be an alternate.
Yeah, wanna be an alternate?
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Well, just, yeah.
They are interesting.
I am, I. So Bob doesn't throw, so you just be the person, if you go, you go, you don't, you don't.
Bob's a total loser, ain't no man.
He's not, he's not, he's got another one yet.
I'll second that.
Let's not, let's not put you as an alternate, let's just.
He was an absolute board.
That's right. That's fine, alright, anything else? Moving on, Joint Wastewater Commission, Kevin Oden, Deborah Debojovich, and Bob Tock. Do those people still wanna be on it?
I think so.
You heard from Bob Tock, he still wants to be on it?
Could be on it.
Okay? Lakeview Cemetery Association, Deborah Debojovich.
Yeah.
Annual appointments, Mayor Prokam, Deborah Debojovich. Anybody got, uh, anything else that would like to bring up on that? Street Inspector, Zoning Officer, Kevin Oden, Robert Stein. Anybody wanna jump in on that one? It's always gonna be Kevin, but.
I think it has to be Kevin and the mayor, but unless it changes the law.
No, the law's the same, I wasn't, I tried.
Yeah, you're trying.
I tried. City Attorney, John Dimich, civil and criminal, regulations, John. City Engineer, JPJ Engineering.
He did get a second proposal this time, so.
You don't have to give a proposal.
I didn't include it, because you guys got it first.
Yeah, I don't know, I just thought it would be a little.
I didn't, no, I didn't include it yet, sorry.
City Council.
But they're both here, if you have questions for each of them.
We just gotta say we have another.
So you have to.
Where we have another, um, we have, for other interests.
Who has Bolt Mank?
Yeah, and Bolt Mank, the representative back there, JPJ, John is here.
Are we making a motion?
So you would, you decide which one you wanna go with, or do you wanna go with neither, or?
Maybe we should let them, maybe, I mean, would it be too long to let them say a couple words, or, I mean, are you, do you have any questions from them?
I'd say you've got their proposals, so if you have any questions on, unless somebody wants to say something.
Just wait a moment here, to get that close back. Yeah. Sorry, we're taking a, taking a break, one of the council members is indisposed right now. So John, what kind of bike things?
I don't know.
The three of us, you can join too, really.
We just gotta play one more game, and then we can take play.
Do you think, should we meet before the next meeting?
You can say, I don't know. Really, you don't have a class?
Should we meet in front of that somewhere? Yeah, and so, I feel like, more of Kevin and I are both, I think, we're more flexible than you guys, so. So, trying to shoot us some times, yeah, okay.
We get a little offensive and defensive for it.
Sorry. No, no problem, then. We're going back to the, uh.
Engineer?
City Engineer, I, I've learned that we are not required to have a city engineer for the city, I've been told many, many times, it's, it's we choose to have, to appoint one, is that correct?
Right. Which, didn't we discuss last year, if we have one, does it get us more grants, is that, or?
I, I don't remember that.
It doesn't get you more grants, they apply for grants for you. If the project's big enough and.
And it's funding.
They would get, they would get to engineer the project.
I don't know how it works, I don't build stuff, I'm more destroy stuff by accident. So, we stay, making a motion, stay with JPJ, we make a motion to go with Mank, or we make a motion not to have any?
I'll make a motion to go with Bolt Mank.
We got a motion, is there a second? Okay, a second for discussion, motion by Hekumovich, second by. Okay, a second for discussion, motion by Heckelovich, second by Meyer Nail, are you okay? Are you, no, are you gonna?
I'm just gonna grab a glass water.
Okay.
I'm ready number two.
Alright, we're good to go, break here.
I'm just gonna.
That's okay. I wanna give a hundred, hundred hippos, everybody.
Did you bring it?
Nah, I didn't.
Hey, Bob?
Yes.
It's probably a good time to mention us and maybe you can reiterate it, but we're still looking for people to have a committee. Playground committee?
Playground committee.
What did you call it?
Parsonac. Super chill.
So what's the official title that you wanna?
I don't wanna say though.
Well, no, but I mean.
Uh, we're looking for volunteers to sit on the playground committee.
Playground, just a playground committee?
Yeah.
Preferably with fun, creative experience.
Interliable.
Well, it's more of a park than it is a playground, so you may want to just call it, I don't know, what are we calling this?
Parks and Rec Committee, that would be.
There you go, call it that, that's fine.
Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
We'll get into that then. Okay, um, we got a motion, we got a second of, uh, having Make as our engineering firm this year. So any discussion?
How about current projects? That we have ongoing underwriting?
Well, is there any current projects, Kevin?
Yeah, bonding project.
And that would stay with JPJ, or?
No. It could go with.
I'm just curious how it works. That's all I wanted to know.
Any other discussion?
Or you could, I think you could keep it with JPJ. And still, you know, hire Bolton Make as the city engineer, I don't, I don't know. But I think Bolton Make could transition to, you know.
You, you can designate that existing projects, maybe as one of the same, projects that you're working on as a grant, as anything active tonight.
How far into that project are we?
We just play it for the, play it for money, I mean, there's no designer, nothing yet.
We're still in the discussion phase, well.
I would, I would just like to say maybe that this really is nothing against JPJ because, um, I think, um, they've been fine and wonderful and done good things, it's just that Bolton Make has been aggressively, I just, I see them, I heard the word aggressive earlier today, and I, I feel like they're more competitive, and, and I guess if that was anything that I would like to go with is maybe, um, a little bit more competitive edge, so that maybe we can get some of these grants and stuff like that, so, I mean, it's really nothing against JPJ, it's just, I feel like Bolton Make is maybe a little more competitive than.
Keep in mind that JPJ was at Coleman, we would beat them here, if, that's, you know what I'm saying, it wasn't like.
I don't, I.
The travel time and all that, you know?
Apparently, I understand that.
Okay.
Completely understand that, and that was not any part of it. I had had a discussion, um, at a training that I went to, um, and I was just really enjoying Bolton Make, I don't know what his name is, I'm sorry.
Joe.
Joe, um, Joe was at that meeting, we had some good conversations, and I just think that overall, they're very competitive in, in getting things done, and going out and seeking funding and stuff like that, so I'd like to have that edge more a little bit with us on the city council.
Okay, we have a motion that's already on the floor, and that motion is to go with Make. But do you want to change your motion to have JPJ continue on with us over now, or not, or not?
I'll change my motion that JPJ can stick with the bonding project.
If they want to.
If they want to, and then going forward, new projects will be done by Bolton Make.
Okay, so that's the first, we have a second on that motion. Okay.
I'll second, I'll second the motion for discussion.
Okay, yeah, first and a second, first by Heckelovich and second by Tavoyevich for discussion.
The only reason that I, and maybe I don't know all about this bonding issue, but I'm feeling that, um, I thought that we need to be more aggressive with bonding issue and actually for us to be prevented it, and we talked, and we talked about the same thing, like, we need to be aggressive, I mean, people in our court who are going to be seeking this out for us, um, and that's the only reason I'm saying that, rather than that Bolton Make, we need to do this one too.
Are you saying they got a bigger footprint in the state compared to JPJ, or?
No, I'm saying that they might help us to, uh, I don't know, so we need to be probably contacting our, our services and stuff, or like, is that not right?
John, are you interested in keeping the project?
If you were, I would.
I, I, I'll say this, I went and rode the bus, that was for the bonding project, correct? And, and John showed up, we took half a day to do it, so I think John did help us with that, and that's why I feel like he should keep this project, because he took time out of his day, I took time out of my day, and, and he was there, he helped, he spoke on our behalf, so, the personal, I think he should stay on the project, JPJ should stay on the project. So I do think they are working on our behalf, I don't, so.
So we still have the original motion and a second for, uh, what we were just talking about, any further discussion? Yes, take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Maybe yes or no?
Okay, then I'm, I'm a yea then.
You're a what, a yea?
I will, I will side with them, that we can.
So all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, yes.
Moving on. City Depository, First National Bank, Kohleran. I'm just gonna read them off, if you guys, if you want to change, then just speak up. Legal newspaper, Scenic Range News Forum. Civil Defense Coordinator, Robert Stein. Uh, Lead Inspectors, Kevin Hotten, Robert Stein. Fire Board, Deborah Tavoyevich and Brian Johnson. Brownsfield Project, Deborah Tavoyevich. Miles reimbursement, federal standard rate beginning January first, twenty twenty is fifty-seven and a half cents per mile. Authorized, signers in all accounts held at First National Bank Kohleran, it's Mayor Robert Stein, Mayor Prokam, Deborah Tavoyevich, Clerk Tered Di Giuseppe and Treasurer Kevin Hotten. Do I have a motion to accept all these annual appointments?
I, can I speak?
Oh, yes.
Did you do Clerk Prokam?
No, it wasn't on the list, I guess, but you're right, Clerk Prokam.
We have that last year either.
We have to have one, oh.
We do?
In case you're gone.
Remember that thing that came through when you were on vacation and they had to appoint me Clerk Prokam?
Well, Kevin, we're, we're on the same.
That was for that Brownsfield thing, yeah.
Yeah, so Clerk Prokam is Kevin Hotten.
Um, emergency situations only.
For what?
For emergency situations only.
For long-term absences. Yeah. Um, anything else? So do I have a motion then to approve all the, uh, appointments?
Oh.
Move by Tavoyevich, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, Heckelovich, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Can we do that, because he's a treasurer, so he can separate clerk and treasurer, can he be Clerk Prokam?
Ooh, good point.
Yeah, because one of the, the galleries are having separate.
Right, they need to be separate.
Can we?
How about Carla, she's still a, she's still, she's still an employee.
Yeah, I'll be Carla.
I'll rescind my motion. I'll rescind my, I'll rescind my, I'll rescind my motion and ask Carla, Clerk Prokam, and Make a motion again.
Do we have a second? Second by Heckelovich, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
I would just say we keep her an employee.
Yeah?
Well, she is, she's an employee for police stuff, I mean, so.
She's on the payroll, sometimes it's free, sometimes when you're on vacation.
Right.
So, moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve amendments from the December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting? Disparagement for bills and payroll and the treasurer's report dated November two thousand nineteen?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Heckelovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tavoyevich, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Wait, who screwed up? Who did the motion and the second for all the appointments?
I did.
I second.
So Heckel starts with you.
I know.
Okay, Department of Heads of Committees, City Engineer John Matten, status report. When you do that, that's gonna assault on the one. Do we have anything, uh, for a status report on that bonding project?
Just the, the, the bonding, the second is started, so.
Okay.
And it's the big key, you know, um, having, you know, the, the elected officials be, you know, aggressive on that, because, because you're the officials.
Right.
For the city, you know, I'm just a private individual, so that's why, that's getting, you giving the contacts, because I think that's important.
Yeah, we jump to our representatives and all that stuff.
Right, right, they're the ones that work for you.
Right.
So John, would you be willing to, uh, handle this council? I just don't exactly know what to say, because I know that we need to be contacting, um, could you please help us with that? Could you help us say, send us an email with some verbiage, a little bit of what we could say when we, and who, what committees are we needing to be, being out to?
We'd be able to stand you in there, right?
One for one.
Yeah.
And I don't know what committee it is in the legislature that these things are going to, with the multiple different bills, uh, there's different individuals that sponsor bills and so forth. But yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
The state only has one point three billion dollars of the year.
But I worry that if we don't get out there, if we don't say something, we're not gonna get all over it. I mean, I know we did the, we did ICC, we did the, whatever we did, um, that kind of stuff, I know we did that, but we need to get our name out there right now, okay, so. Okay, thank you.
Good work.
Thanks, John.
Good work.
Street Public Works, Kevin Hotten, status report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You've all read my report?
We did.
In depth?
No.
Word for word?
Yeah.
Well, the word is just a little off, but that's all.
I have not been known from a brand.
I know.
Uh, anything on it, before I touch on it?
Well, it's shorter than normal.
Snowy, don't lie, it's snowy.
This is my observation.
And I haven't gone for three weeks, so.
Okay.
I enjoyed that very much, I may have. So. Okay, but. Uh, we got the approval for, from the state for the wellhead protection plan, and the requirement is that we have to hold a public meeting, it can be during council meeting. So we need to do that within sixty days of notice of the approval letter, so we need to do that at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have, at the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, so you have to, motion.
Do I have a motion to, uh, have a public hearing at the next meeting for the wellhead protection plan?
Oh.
Move by Tavoyevich, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Meyer Nail, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Assuming no one's opposed, motion carries, so, anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Anything else? Plow.
Plow, not next.
Bigger plow.
Not bigger.
When?
It's a design.
They're higher.
Design change.
I am not afraid of it.
Yeah, just, just curious.
This could be something, this could be next year anyway, I mean, if I could.
Right.
But then you're, and then, you know, maybe that's.
So do you have some things you can buy off the shelf, so speaking of?
Um, can I get some update on the boiler?
Uh, boiler's running, uh, the burner control module, which is a solid-state module, uh, four hundred and forty dollars, and.
Is that a five-year part, basically, standing that's expected to go back?
I think it should last a little longer, but.
Maybe we need to next year buy another one to have it on then?
Well, actually, the place I got it from has rebuilt for a hundred and seventy dollars, so basically we can send the old one in, and.
Oh, I see.
So then the line is better.
Okay.
Which I planned on doing, so.
Sounds good.
But no, he, he did, nothing froze.
Perfect.
Thank you for the heaters in the office, don't forget to grab them.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep it, okay.
For the next time.
Carla said keep it also.
Okay. Terrible of that show, three heaters.
But, don't monkey with my fan.
Maybe, just don't look for it during the year.
Yeah, all right.
Alright, that's basically all I got.
Thank you, Kevin.
Terrible to do that.
Alright. Moving on to, uh, Police Chief, willing to hold.
Guess we'll have to have this, uh, report for December, uh, a hundred and thirty-five calls for the COVID options on the panel. By those for assisted other agencies, and a very serious call by the assistant with, uh, I have this note there, who would like, uh, I think they're getting very interesting, how much, five thousand, I expect it to continue to be there.
So we had a hundred and thirty-five calls just in a month in December, how many total do you estimate?
For the year?
Yeah, we, we averaged about a hundred in some months, right?
It's probably right around seven hundred. Uh, so there's a lot of stuff that, there's just people talking that doesn't get documented, most of them are a call, but it's con- conversation with residents.
Right, it's, it's interaction, yeah.
Yeah, there are quite a few, that's just all the, uh, officers handling that, Corian has theirs, and Corian typically has a few more than us, due to the size of it. Any questions on the report at all?
No, I just, I know what the numbers are doing, I know the numbers go on all over the place, and.
I mean, actually, for the next meeting, try and get the, the two thousand nineteen full numbers if you want.
I'm just trying to, you know.
I'm very curious too.
Yeah, I just know that it's going up everywhere, a lot of these different crimes that are occurring, law enforcement needs to be adjusting for all these different types of crimes that we're now having to investigate, but.
I think John's probably seeing influence, influence system also, which are our departments.
If it doesn't take you a ton of time, maybe like the last three years, and just so we can.
So it costs?
Yeah.
I'll show you how to do it, it's real easy.
Alright, I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Stop talking, Katie, we'll look the other.
That's my, uh.
Yeah.
And I guess the only other thing I have is some months ago, we ordered vests for the department, reimbursed by the state. These are the vests, they're ordinary, they're low, low-bearing vests, uh, they have to sponsor containing handcuffs and stuff on, they have to buy added sensors yet. Uh, some of them, although we may do, deliver a few things on the belt, uh, which I think will help all the backs and hips. Yeah, so, I'm glad that that's.
Glad that you got that, it's.
One last thing to wriggle.
That's right.
Any questions?
No?
You go.
Thank you, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
What else those helicopters are doing?
Yeah. What did it break it for?
It was an accident.
Was it?
Well, not a, a construction accident.
It's life flight, then.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to City Council. There's nothing on there, but do we have anything we need to discuss?
Tara?
No?
I think so.
All right, City Attorney, John Dimich.
Nothing. Lister?
Clerk Tara Di Giuseppe.
Clerk's conference is coming up in March, so we need approval to go on that.
Do we have a motion to approve the city clerk going to the conference, March 16th to the 19th, the same club?
I'll make a motion to approve. We said you went last year, didn't you? Yeah, I'll make.
For a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next one's fire relief.
So back in August, the fire board approved that the fire relief benefit payment per year would increase from one thousand five hundred and fifty to seventeen hundred. That is no additional cost to the city and they just need approval from the council also.
Is there a motion to approve the increase?
Sold.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? Motion carries. And then now on the seat for contribution.
Yeah, so I gave you this little thing here. So you can see what the fire department budget is for this year. It increased by about fifty thousand and that's due to the fire truck. So city contributions would be approximately ninety-seven thousand two hundred. If we stick to the which our contract says, sixty-five thirty-five. Full lease portion would be the thirty-four thousand twenty and then half of our contribution for the building. So I would need approval to pay to Charlie Fire, thirty-six thousand five hundred and twenty for our annual contribution.
Okay, is there a motion?
So you're subtracting the fire truck payment out of this and that's all, it's just for?
We not subtract fire truck payment. Don't do that.
No. This is just the.
That's what our, that's what our.
Here, I'm bringing that size. The city will be making more.
All right. We're still at thirty-five sixty-five split.
Yes.
There's been no change to it at this point.
And I don't foresee one, thank you.
So we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the fire department budget for two thousand twenty.
Motion by Djovjovic, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Meyer Nail, any discussion?
So we are, this is our payment for the whole year. This is including the, the, the. Truck. Payment, okay.
Based on what our agreement says.
Right.
So you're approving the budget and the payment to, you just said budget.
Well, budget and payment, pardon me. Budget and payment.
So do we have a second on that amendment? What you didn't say?
Amendment, okay, I'll second it.
Second by Meyer Nail, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Tara, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Any old business that we need to discuss to get on the next agenda for call, for cleanup, right? Any new business?
Well, we need to decide on the next time for, I mean.
For our.
Four weeks. Yeah, for, for close meeting, that.
Contract cleanup, you mean?
Yeah.
What are you looking at me for? What's your pleasure?
Well, as soon, as soon as possible, when it works.
Yeah, well, I was saying next Monday and no one responded except for Deb.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I guess I didn't see that.
Was it a text message?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I, yeah, Monday's fine, actually. I, I guess I missed that, so.
Monday's a holiday.
Well, I'm still off of work, so.
Monday is a holiday, but there's no union people working.
I work.
Back there?
No, we don't, yeah, that's nice.
Can you conduct city business on holiday?
No, you can't. Oh, well, there you are.
You're gonna close me?
Yeah, it's conducting city business.
On Monday.
And I need to know all these meetings because they do have to be posted.
Yeah, I know that's, I mean.
So.
Yes, you are asked to repost it, Adam, isn't it?
So, so when's the next date that works?
What?
It's probably Monday.
Wednesday the twenty-second works for me. Tuesday the twenty-first evening works for me.
Tuesdays I'm off.
Wednesday evening, the twenty-second works.
That'll work for me.
Let's see here. Okay.
Wednesday the twenty-second, is that what we're doing? What day?
Twenty-five thirty last day.
I'm off holiday, so.
That's three.
That's three. And then before that meeting, can we, we get?
Information is in your mail, isn't it?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.